We have a new sound system, or updated. Can you hear me in the back? Not very well, okay.
How about now?
I can hear you. There we go. Perfect.
That's much better.
Usually with my voice, you can hear me without the microphone. Okay, first up, we have the approval of council minutes. I'm sorry, roll call first. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp is absent.
Now, we will move to approval of council minutes from October 14th, 2015, the work session minutes and the regular session minutes from October 14th.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the work session and regular session minutes from October 14th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next up is the consent calendar. And I will just bring to attention the Strategic Action Plan 15-member task force that most of the members are actually here in the audience, and I appreciate you coming and supporting the project. And with that, I'll take a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Consent calendar is approved. And our big topic for tonight will be the Strategic Action Plan process, and we'll turn that over to Gary Marks.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of our community. I'm very pleased that we're finally to this stage of our process. The city is about to embark on the second step of a process that is rather unique among cities in Oregon. It's not unique that a city might decide to do a community vision, or to even then implement it with a strategic plan. The reason I'm saying that it's unique is the process that we've taken. We've made sure that the products that come out of this process are truly the products of our community, not of myself, or of consultants, or even of the city council. And for example, when we did the vision, starting last January, and it ran through June when the council finally adopted it, it would be the normal process for a city to do a vision, to collect information from the community, and then to have a consultant or some group of internal employees kind of synthesize that all together and present something to the city council, or even for the city council to go through it. What we did that was different was, we said, no, the citizens should own this vision. It's about them. And so, we turned it over to the citizens. We assembled together a group of, it was 20 or 25 people, from various aspects of the community, various walks of life, representing different areas of interest, both economic and social. And we drew those people together, and we said, here's all of the information that we've accumulated through our focus groups. We had 21 focus groups. We had two surveys that were community-wide, that were out on our website, and available also in hard copy. We were at the Biz Expo, literally talked to hundreds of people about the future of our community. And there was a visioning session that we had at the Boys and Girls Club, where we had close to 100 people come out, and we were doing a real-time poll there, where we were asking the citizens questions about their community, and they were able to vote immediately with these little clickers that we gave them. And so, we took that information, we took the information from the surveys, from the various interviews, we did numerous interviews of folks throughout the community. We took all of that information, and we handed it over to a group of citizens that we called the sounding board. And we said, here's some ideas about what we think this all means. You tell us, what is the vision of the community? And help us understand the focus areas that we need to look at and develop a plan for, so that the vision is something more than a statement that we put on a shelf, or we put on a wall. Because we wanted to put it to action. The idea of the vision is that, in the year 2040, if we're, some of us are still here, we want to be able to say, that vision that we had back in 2015, what it says about our community today is true. And so, in a minute, we're going, what we've done is, we've said, you know, this process belongs to the citizens, and so, they've given us this vision now. They've given us seven focus areas. They've told us, this is what you need to work on. So, what we're here about today is, we're going to start the strategic plan. And that's where we're going to have our citizens, our stakeholders, come together again, through various surveys, again, public meetings, interviews, all of those sorts of outreach efforts again. And we're going to say, what are the projects, what are the programs, what are the activities that we need to be looking at? In this first phase, we're going to take this in five-year chunks, but for this next five years, what does the city need to be working on? And oh, by the way, some of the focus areas really aren't in the basket of the city. They'll fall into other groups, other nonprofit groups in the community, perhaps some of the education community. And we're going to be reaching out to some of those folks, and asking them to take pieces of this vision to help us implement it as we go forward, because it's truly a community vision. So, today, what the council just did is they appointed a group of 15 individuals, again, who represent various areas of interest in our community. And they're going to be the group that, again, takes all of the information that we collect from the community, and they're going to tell us, what are the projects, the programs, and so forth, that we need to look at over the next five years at least, to start moving us in the direction of the vision. So, understanding what this vision is now, and not wanting it to be something that just gets put away and forgotten, we made a decision that we're going to put that vision on the walls of our meeting room for the city council, here in the council chambers. And that's what these blue sheets are. And so, if I can have my handy assistant get up, we're going to unveil this. And what you'll see is the vision itself up in the left-hand corner, and then the seven focus areas. So, what our citizens told us was that Lebanon is a friendly and thriving community. And I've got to tell you, I've been in the city management business for almost 25 years, and I've never seen a community vision that concise and to the point. Why is that? Well, I think it's pretty simple. Usually, as I said before, the actual vision, when it comes time to write it, it's done by a consultant, or it's done by a bureaucrat like me. Even sometimes, the city council might do it, and you end up with these big monstrous statements. And you read them, and you try to understand what it says. But you know, we handed this over to our citizens, and they gave us something concise and beautiful, I think. And when you look at that, and you think about what we know of Lebanon today, I would submit to you that what our community told us is, we like the fact that we are now a friendly community, and we like that our community is thriving. With all the change going on around us, we don't want that to change. We want to continue to be a friendly and thriving community. And so, that's why we have these focus areas up here. These are the areas that they told us, we need to focus on these, we need to figure out what the projects and the programs are in each of these areas, and we need to program those over the next five years to start with, and we'll come back in another five years and look at it again. But we need to start moving forward, so that we don't let our future just happen to us. The future will be something that, if we're true to our objective here, the future will be something that we make, and that we can be proud of when we're done. And it'll be a product of, not the city organization, not any one, or two, or three, or several nonprofit groups. It'll be a product of the citizens themselves, because they're the ones who wrote this. And now, we're coming back again to our community and saying, please help us, tell us what we need to do to make your vision come true. So, that's why we're here. I want to thank the members of the task force. We've got a big job ahead of us. There's going to be a lot of information to get through, but you know, we've got some great folks on that, on the task force, and I'm really looking forward to this process. As a city manager, it doesn't get any better than this, and I count myself lucky every day that I get to come to work at a place like Lebanon, Oregon. So, thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to Mayor Aziz now.
Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, city manager Gary Marks. I'd like to welcome the Lebanon 2040 Community Strategic Action, welcome you to the Lebanon 2040 Community Strategic Action Plan kickoff. The purpose of the plan, and the strategic plan, is a to-do list that is necessary to make the community vision established, that we established earlier this year as a reality. As you may know, the community vision resulted from an exhaustive citizen and stakeholder engagement process. Members of the community actually developed the vision statement, which reflects the values, characters, and priorities of Lebanon's citizens and stakeholders. The vision is supported by seven focus areas that you see on the wall, and they will need to be addressed to make the vision a reality. That's where the Community Strategic Action Plan comes in. It's a process where the citizens and the stakeholders will work together to identify the projects, programs, and strategies that will move the vision forward. I want to thank all the task force members for volunteering their time, expertise, and knowledge to help us develop our community strategic action plan. Having trouble with strategery. My hope and expectation is that the community's input will guide your efforts, make the plan something that belongs to the residents and the stakeholders of Lebanon, and reflects their values expressed in the vision. At the end of the process, the final product will not only reflect our community's desired future, but will be pushed forward by our community partners and commitment to help make it a reality. Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Tom Oliver, to begin his leadership role as the newly-appointed chair of the task force. And by the way, after council adjourns, we'd like to appreciate, we would appreciate it if we could get a photo of the whole group with Eric Jensen. And Tom, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been a while since I've sat in this chair. But I want to start with really thanking you for allowing me to be part of this process. It's been exciting to watch the visioning thus far, and I think, Gary, you got all the good meat, so I guess you got lucky by going first. It's hard to add to that, but I think, as we work through this process, if we look around town, all the great things that have happened here haven't happened by accident. They've been the result of careful planning, and the council, and the staff, and the community working together. Starting with the economic development that's happened here in town, if we go back to looking at infrastructure that's been built to support that, to making permitting process easier, to working on reducing the Part 1 crime rate. You know, as I started thinking about this process, I went through some of my old notes, and for some reason, I had a folder that had council goals in it from different years at home. I'm not really sure why, but I went through that and looked, and this group has a really good track record of meeting those goals. So, I think, as we embark on this process, I certainly have confidence that as a strategic plan is developed, that really encompasses the livability and the growth of the whole community, those things are going to happen, and it's not going to happen overnight. It takes time, as we all know, but it's encouraging to see that. So, I really applaud the city for taking this step and being committed to working through the process.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I look forward to your working, I'm going to get a little bit loud there, your working on the committee with us, and the work you've done in the past in the city. And those that don't know Tom, Tom was instrumental in a lot of the different things that have happened around town, so I'm excited to have you on the group. Thank you, and your leadership.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we will be, can we turn that down just a tad? Get a little bit of feedback. A little too much. Working the bugs out here. There we go. Testing. That's a little better. Thank you. Next up, regular session, will be Gary Marks's city manager's report.
I'll be brief. My extended remarks for my manager's report are in the council packet, but I wanted to highlight just one issue. Over the last few months, myself and our economic development team at the city have had a couple of opportunities where we had a chance to bring some new employers to town, significant employers. And in both cases, they, the prospects ended up not deciding in our favor. And I want to talk about an issue that is emerging, that we're going to need to address, and perhaps it's something that gets even folded into the strategic plan. And that is, that although we have lots of open industrial land for distribution centers and other types of businesses to come to town, most of it is impacted by wetlands, or wetlands designations. And because of that, right now, the normal way that a business would mitigate and be able to build on some of this industrial land is to buy a wetlands mitigation credit. There are private entities that have built wetlands in other places around the valley, and you can go and you can buy a credit from them, so then you can build on the wetland, on the property that you buy. Well, as the market forces have developed over time, credits have become extremely expensive, and they're right now running at about $65,000 an acre. And when the property, the property is less than that per acre, more, you know, usually they're listing for about $50,000 an acre. When we have folks come and look at us to bring jobs to our community, and these are living wage jobs, I'm sick about the ones we lost. When we tell them about the cost of, all-in cost of the land, it's just, we're not competitive. We are, as you know, we're, we've been very progressive in our approach to attracting businesses and employers to our community, and we've had success in the past. We have lows because we built a wetland, and it cost us a lot of money. And that's not something that we now have the ability to do again. And that's why we have lows, because we are able to address that issue. We don't have that ability, and so, going forward, we need to figure out some way of addressing this. To that end, I have been working with my colleagues around the valley and other cities, who also have a similar issue with wetlands, and their ability to attract business to their communities as well. And we're now engaged in a process of seeing that there's a regional solution. I spoke with someone at Senator Wyden's office, and met with the governor's solutions task force, I think it was a week or two ago. And we had a discussion about the wetlands. So, folks in state and federal government are aware of this issue, they're watching it, and I and my colleagues are getting to work with some ideas. So, I wanted to make you aware of that. I know that I had hinted around that we had some prospects, and that I was excited about them. We met their requirements in every other way. In fact, one of them looked at me and said, this business belongs in Lebanon, Oregon. And I said, well, I would love to make that come true. But at the end of the day, when they looked at 100,000 plus per acre, they just couldn't make the math work. So, I wanted to make you aware of that issue. Like I said, maybe it's something that needs to be recognized in our strategic action plan that we've just launched here today, but I want you to know that I'm already working on it, and I think that the solution is a regional one. I don't think it's something that, within our own means, we can handle. So, if there are any questions about my manager's report, I'd be happy to respond to those.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Items from council. Did you have something, Jason?
I was going to bring up something to do with our, and it kind of overlaps into planning, I think, and our permitting process, but I'd like to see a couple of things addressed. I've been approached by a few business owners, and then also on a personal level, just from what I see, and mostly it's in regards to what all this kind of classifies as roadside sales. We see these kind of pop up different times of the year. I know we have our fireworks, you know, Fourth of July. But strawberry festival, we see the blanket sales go up, and we see the knickknacks that get spread out all along whatever part of the highway that the vendors are usually on. And I'd like to see us maybe take on a proactive approach to better manage those types of vendors. And along with that, kind of ties into, we've also had some recent food truck vendors come into our town. And I'm a strong proponent of that. I think that's a wonderful economic opportunity for the city. I think it draws people here potentially. So, I'd like to maybe have staff and council maybe look into addressing both of those issues, which is, to my understanding, kind of fall under the one umbrella at this point, but maybe we need to consider separating out those into a separate food vendor issue that we can address, and then also our typical vendors, or our roadside vendors. Because at any time, you know, you can drive down the street, and you can see someone selling blankets, someone selling tie-dye, someone selling oranges, someone selling, and I, you know, I really don't know, are those people paying for their permits? Do they just kind of pull into a parking lot and open up shop, and hope they don't get asked if they have a permit? And so, if we could do something to maybe clean up that process, and also address the food truck issue, which to me personally, I think, needs to be revamped, looked at again, so.
Jason and I talked about this ahead of time. I'm ready, if that's the direction of the council, if you'd like to review, it would be a council decision, if you'd like to move forward in that direction. I've shared it with Walt Windoloski, who's our community development director. We do have some ideas that we'd like to have a conversation with the council about. It would probably be the January council meeting at this point, given the holidays and all that we've already got on our agenda. But I'd like to hear from the whole of the council, if this is a direction you'd like to move, and if you have your own ideas about what Jason's presented. I'd like to, more than anything, I want to make sure that when staff works on it, that we're in tune with all of you on the city council.
I agree that we should look at it, and I also agree that I love having the food trucks here. I want to be super sure they're safe. And so, I would have us look at all of the regulation.
Yeah, I had a discussion with Walt. Is he here? Walt here? Let's see, Walt. And I was concerned exactly with what you're talking about, about do they have a license? Are they a safe, you know, place to eat? Are they clean? And that would be one of my things. And even though he felt that we weren't in that, in that business, I guess of doing that, I still think that if, that we could make sure that they at least have, when they apply for a permit, some type of the food handlers, or whatever the requirement is from county, to be a safe place, so that we would at least ensure that our citizens are, have, you know, food trucks that are safe.
We had one here that was, I don't want to say it wrong, I'm not sure, but had some sort of a negative relationship with the county. And so, you know, and if they're going to sell food to the public, they have to be, they have to have passed inspection. And so, that may not be our business, but to do the inspection, but it can be our business to verify that they have been inspected, and that kind of stuff.
Exactly. I agree.
In fact, we do that now, but we should probably look at the process and see if there's ways that we can even tighten up what we do now.
Yeah.
I agree. I think we ought to look into this and get it to our next meeting.
Okay.
I can see a lot of bobbing heads, so we'll move forward, and I'll plan on coming back with a discussion with all of you in January.
Okay. Anything else from council? One quick one. Thanksgiving night cascade Christmas lights will be going online, so the light display will be hitting off, and we're supposed to possibly have snow Wednesday. It's in the forecast, it's still a week away, but it's possible. Anything else? With nothing else, we'll move into the public comment section. And at this time, the public can come forward and speak to council, and I don't have my little readout here. And you'll have five minutes to speak to the council, and you'll need to sign up on the, there's a signup sheet there. So, anybody that would like to speak to council? Address council.
Good afternoon. I hope you can hear me. My name is Margaret Coldiron. I'm a citizen here in Lebanon, and I love that I was here for this thing. I love living in Lebanon, and when I tell people that, there's two reasons that they look at me like I'm totally insane. One of them is the drug use, which I see up there on the thing, and I know that Chief Stevenson is taking care of it. It's gotten way less from the time that we moved here, and I moved here from California, so I'm like, I don't have a problem. The other reason is the water issue. And I'm not here to make you guys groan and roll your eyes, it's not the regular water issue that I'm here for. I understand the reason why the cost of our water is like gold. We have a new water facility that's supposed to be being built, and I get that, I totally get that. And it's not even, I'm not even here about the Water Lady, who is the rudest person I've ever met. I'm here actually about a new thing that I learned. I own a house on Jennings Street, and my father owns a house on West Cedar. And I'm renting the house on West Cedar from my dad, because I have a little girl, and my house on Jennings Street is only a one-bedroom. So, the house on Jennings Street is actually vacant. I went through a divorce, and my ex-husband called me, and he lives in Albany, and he tells me, I have your water bill here. And I went, oh, that's, I don't have a water bill. And he said, oh, yeah, well, yeah, you do, and it's here, so come get it. And I came and got it, and it's $53. And I was rather surprised about that, because I don't have a water bill. I don't use water at the Jennings Street House. It's off. And I went to the water office, and the crazy lady there told me that, yeah, vacant houses in Lebanon are charged almost $53 every month for no water. This blows my mind. I can't believe this. I don't think that this is fair to the citizens. We're not getting water. That's like a regular monthly bill of water. And people don't know that. People aren't informed of that. And when I asked her about that, I said, you know, that seems like something that you would tell people when they are setting up their water. She told me, well, we can't tell everybody everything. And I said, okay, well, I want to talk to your boss. She sent me here. So, here I am. She sent me here, and so here I am. It seems like, first, that seems like an exorbitant amount of money. Second, how do the people who have vacant houses, how are they informed that they're getting charged $53 a month? I didn't know that. If I don't pay that, I get a lien put on my house. The house that my dad purchased on West Cedar had a $1,600 lien against it. So, then that got paid. So, I mean, that seems like a great way to start funding the new water treatment, to me personally. So, those, and you know, in addition to that, there's, you know, the little, other little things like stormwater on bills, that we don't have stormwater on our street, so why do we have to pay that? You know, there's other little things that we feel like, why are we paying for things that we're not getting? And I just, so here I am, because I have no recourse from the lady in the water office, who I don't under, she, I don't know. She also told me that we don't get our water from the rain either, so.
Well, thank you for coming, Margaret. Was that it?
Yeah. Well, I'm just kind of wondering, what kind of recourse do we have? Is there a way that, I mean, $53, that is a lot for nothing.
I have city manager Gary Marks.
Yeah, Margaret, I'll be happy to explain. When the rates are set, they're done here at the council, and in the past, there's been extensive information put out about the rates, how they're put together. A lot of it predates me, but I think there's still veterans on the council here that remember all the meetings that the city's gone through, certainly other folks in the community were part of that. When you look at utility rates, there usually are two components, and Lebanon's not unusual in how it puts its rates together. Usually two components, there's one for the capital costs- That's the costs that are necessary to maintain our system in the ground of our pipe network, our processing plant, and the maintenance that we go through. Then there's the usage part of the rate. The usage part is where the amount of water you use, there are expenses with chemicals and labor and all those things that go into processing the water you use, so it's safe. So we look at those in two different ways. So when you use your water, you are engaging the volume part of the rate structure. But if you're not, as an owner of property, you still have responsibility to all the other owners in town, who all share in the cost of having a water system that delivers clean water, that meets all the health requirements. So that's, you know, very simply, that's why there are two components, and that's why, even if you're not using water, as an owner of property, and our responsibilities that come with property ownership, as you know, you still have to pay your property taxes, even though you have a vacant home, because, again, that's the responsibility of ownership. So if you were to move back into your house, you would have a ready water system, sewer system, that you could then begin to use immediately. So that's why there's a difference there.
No, that I understand, but it just seems like a large amount for a vacant property. Isn't there some way that that could be, isn't there something that could be done, like have a vacant property charge instead of a regular, that's like a regular water bill. I mean, that's like how much my dad pays.
Please understand that whether your property is vacant or not, that's the election of the owner. You make your own private decision about whether you occupy your property or not. You're still in this social contract with the rest of the community, that together we're going to make sure we have safe, clean water to drink, and we have a safe, clean way to dispose of our waste. And so we're all responsible for that. And whether you're there at your property or not, we need to know that we've been able to cover those costs. So it's not a matter of if you're in your home or not, it's that you own the property, and when you do that, there are responsibilities that go with it. So that's why, if you were in the country without these kinds of systems, then you'd be looking at whatever cost there may be for a well, for how you would dispose septically of your waste and that sort of thing. You may or may not have expenses if you are in your home or not.
Right.
But, and over time, you may have to go out and take out a loan to fix the infrastructure for your rural system, and you may have to pay that back every month.
Okay.
Okay? And maybe you're not even in your home, but you still have to pay that back. Well, it's kind of the same kind of analogy as a community, that we have these, and I'll be the first to tell you, running a municipal system for water and wastewater is extremely expensive. And there's reasons for that. There are requirements put on us by state and federal agencies to make sure that we have healthy drinking water, and that we dispose of our waste in a way that is environmentally sound. And those things are expensive.
Oh, I know, I've been following.
Those aren't rules that we come up with, but they're rules that we have to comply with. So that's why.
Yeah.
And so I hope that's understandable, but, and it is expensive, no doubt.
And so, going to the other thing, but when you start your water account, perhaps that could be made clear by the lady who takes your money?
We can certainly talk to our upfront people. If we can help in that way, we certainly would want to do that.
Is there any kind of a...
I mean, she makes it clear if you don't pay your bill.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And by the way, I've been hearing around town that maybe there's some questions about our water rates. Back two Fridays ago, we posted on some social media sites and on our website, a kind of a white paper, yeah, right there, that shows, I'm glad that you have the information, that shows the reasons for why our water rates are where they are. There's some belief that we have the highest water rates in the state. That's not true.
Oh, no, no, no. I don't believe that we have the highest water rates in the state.
Yeah, we have high rates.
Water rates in the Mid-Wilhelamet Valley, and we do.
But there's reasons for that.
Lebanon is here, and then Albany, Philoma, Sweet Home, Corvallis, down here.
And as each of those communities approach a point in their history where they have to build new facilities, they're going to have to take on new expenses, new capital costs, and their rates will have to come up with it. And when you look at the rates around the state and who's high and who's low, it's not an accident that the ones that are higher are the ones who are in capital campaigns, who are having to replace aged systems and so forth. Our water system, for example, has been in continuous operation since 1946. When they built it, they didn't give us redundancy, which means that we can't take part of our system offline and fix it. So we've sucked the life out of it, if you will.
Right.
And there are times now where we're literally bandaging the thing together to keep it going, trying to make sure we have water pressure in all areas of the city, and it's not fun. And what we want to avoid more than anything is failure of our water system. We can't allow that to happen. The time has come, we've got to confront these costs, and, yeah, it's expensive. I won't sugarcoat that in a minute.
Yeah.
But, you know, with, just a smidgen of pride, I'll say that there are some other communities that are significantly higher than us.
Yes, I did, I see that on this chart here. It says St. Helens, Portland, Lake Oswego, and then Lebanon. But, you know, in this area, Lebanon is definitely the most expensive. And it does make me a little bit sad that people don't want to move here, because our water is expensive. And when they do move here, they definitely look for a place to rent instead of buy, so that they don't have to pay for their water.
Right.
And it makes me sad, because I love living here. I love living here. It's a great community. Yeah, we do have some crime, and, yeah, we do have some drugs, but, again, I moved here from California, and there's no way I would ever move back. I love it here. And, you know, paying a little bit extra for our water, it's worth it to me. But, again, compared to our surrounding communities of Philoma, Corvallis, Sweet Home, and Albany, we do have the highest water. Maybe not in the state, but our surrounding communities. And so when people come here to look for a place to live, they are definitely looking for a place to rent, so that they don't have to pay for their water. And it makes me sad. And I know why. I completely understand why. And, yeah, we're going to have a state-of-the-art facility, and it's going to hopefully last us a lot longer. I would like to hear more about it, because I don't have to go looking to hear about it. And I tell everyone who will listen why our water is expensive. And I know that there was a little tiff between Lebanon and Albany about the canal and everything. I have to go looking for it, but I know, and I'll tell everyone who will listen, you know, yeah, well, our water is going to be clean while you guys have to wait for your facility, and, you know, that's why.
Yeah.
And that's why I was like, that's not why I'm here. I just want to know why I have to pay on my empty house. And I, but I love our community. I'm glad I was here to see this unveiling. I love it here. And I want people to come here and live here, and they don't want to because of our water. And I will tell everyone who will listen, but I would love to see more out there about the progress on our new facility and what's happening with it and where it's going.
We regularly deal with that issue here. I welcome you to second Wednesday of almost every month. Often at the water, of course, is on the agenda, so please come, please be informed about what we're doing and weigh in. We welcome your comments.
And also, on our last meeting, we had a work session. If you go on YouTube, there's a full video of the hour that we spent on the work session talking about the new water plant. So if you're interested in that, it's really detailed, and it's got a lot of good information on what it's going to do, and the cost, and all the different information about it, so. And Robert, do you have something we need to wrap that up?
Yeah, just two comments. One, you made a statement with respect to renting, so that you didn't have to pay the water portion. If water's being used at a given property and a tenant, rental tenant, is not paying that, that means the landlord is paying that, and it's part of the rent. So it's not as if the bill is not there.
Right.
And the...
Well, they're looking for apartments, not houses.
And the property owner is covering those costs of the infrastructure, as well as the usage, and then passing that on as a rental price. I know that, because we have some rental properties. And we do, in some rental properties, I have, you know, the tenant pays that, and others, we pick that up. The second part I'd like to comment on, with respect to the infrastructure piece, Gary, that you mentioned. She's making a request about whether there could be a different price for a rental or a vacant property. And maybe that's something that we ought to look at the next time we update our rate structure, and just see if there's any difference, you know, and what that would do to the other properties and the other rates, if there were a different calculation for vacant properties. I don't know how many, at any one time, are vacant, whether that's something that could be calculated, and, you know, would it be too much of a problem to go on or offline with respect to when it's rented? I don't know, but she's making a request. I think we ought to at least look at that question as to whether, I mean, we have different rate structures and different schedules for different things. Is that something that we should consider?
I would like to say, because we have had that discussion several times here at council, probably maybe before you were here, because we often get people who are very upset that they spend the winter away and their house is empty, and to pay 50-some, because I understand where you're coming from. Because our, but the basic cost of operating the system is constant. And so every time, it comes back down to, this cost doesn't go down because somebody's not using water. The system itself costs the same. So if we do, if we consider lowering that, or reducing it, or removing it, when the system is not used, that money still has to come from somewhere. Everybody's rates go up.
Right. Everybody else is going to go up.
Right.
And I don't know how much that is. And maybe there's some history, and I could just go to the minutes and look at that. I don't know.
Well, one other thing that wasn't mentioned in that is that when you're away, there are still fire hydrants, which Jason probably would like to see there in operation when he arrives to put your house fire out. The other thing that wasn't mentioned in response is the stormwater, for example. Some people say, "Well, I don't have that." Well, we have 52 miles, I think, of streets that were responsible, the citizens are responsible for dealing with that stormwater discharge. We have parks, we have City Hall, the discharges, those are all, the library, Justice Center, always has a certain amount of stormwater that has to be processed and belongs to all the citizens. So it's not, not all of it is directly related to a person's property, but there's a lot more than what we've discussed today, I guess is my point, that has to be maintained.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Respond to Councilor Furlough's question. Most certainly, the council is the policymaking body, and if staff is directed by the body, by the council, we can certainly come back and report on the merits and maybe some of the demerits of any kind of policy question you would like us to investigate. So if the council would like us to bring that back, the next time we look at the rate structure, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
My name's Heidi Phillips. And we just had, me and a couple of my friends, we're discussing this, and so you guys passed the trash thing. And when we looked on the agenda and went back, because it kind of came out of nowhere, it seems like somebody made a complaint September, and then October it was passed. And when you looked on the agenda, it just said something vaguely like, discussing trash ordinances. So nobody had any idea that this was coming, and it just showed up in the Lebanon Express paper. And one of the things we were wondering is, if you guys can't, on your agenda, well, for number one, maybe give us a little bit of notice, so that we have a chance to contact our representatives, but also with that list on the agenda, we wouldn't have known what to contact our representatives about, because all it says is trash ordinances, and who knows what that entails? Nobody had any idea that could be up to a $600 fine. And couldn't you expand the item agenda a little bit, so it actually gives a description of what you guys are discussing?
So there's two links on there, and I've had this problem too. There's the agenda link, when you go to the page, and then there's the same date, and it says agenda, and it says, "Councilor, pack it or pack it." The packet link is, what the packet is, is everything that's in here. And so if you just look at the agenda, all you're going to see is the one page.
Well, yeah.
And that's what's difficult.
And we have seen that, we looked it up a little bit, and we did see it, but under agenda item, couldn't there be like an additional sentence that says, "Discussing fees," or something like that? Just one additional sentence.
And usually in the packet part is where you'd find that. But I want to address that, because I've had a lot of questions about the trash thing. I wasn't at that meeting, so I didn't get to vote. I don't take any heat for that one. But, no, in all seriousness, the real, there's some problem areas in town, and there have been problem, some problem spots where cans are just left out all week long. And so you have to have, this is not something that our officers are being told, "Get out there and look for trash cans, and by golly, if it's Thursday and their trash day is Wednesday, write them up." It's not going to happen. It is absolutely not going to happen. But what is going to happen is, for the poor people who live next to the guy who leaves his cans out in front of their driveway, or who blocks their curb, or their parking for their, you know, their guests to come park in front of their house, they now have a route to complain and have something done about it.
That's one of my things, though. It seems like it's just giving people, instead of just being a neighbor, which, if there was a trash can left out, like I have two elderly, one lady just lost her husband, I have another one that never comes out of the house, because she's housebound, and I have a long-term trucker next door. If the trash can was a problem as a neighbor, I would just move it for them. And it seems like this has become a way to weaponize city council against your neighbor.
Well, and this is what we deal with. I mean, because I'm right there with you. If my neighbor's can is out, and it's Friday, and my trash day is Thursday, I'll pull her can up to the garage or whatever.
Yeah, no big deal.
You know, but unfortunately, not everyone is like you and me. And so, and some people do want to make an issue of things. And we have to give them just as much respect and just as much of an ear as we give you and me, who are doing the right things. But this gives our PD, our code enforcement, some sort of bite to say, "If you don't, this is the consequence." Whereas before, there was no consequence, and it was, hey, go ahead, you know, what are you going to do about it? So this gives us something to do about it. And I understand there's some confusion about that, and maybe we did a poor job of rolling this out, because it did come out as a shocking fine. But this is not, this is not public enemy number one of the Lebanon Police Department or Lebanon Code Enforcement to go out and look for trash cans and start writing tickets. So it's not going to, I mean, it won't...
He's gone 10 days, you know, at a time. And I see other people that have those little tiny houses that can't be more than 600 square feet.
I'm guilty, and I don't even have an excuse.
And they have no garage, and no property. So, I mean, I see them have their trash cans out, but, I mean, they live in a little tiny house. Where are they going to put it?
I'll admit, we probably got rolled out in a less than hospitable way, and in a less than publicly friendly way. And we can definitely do better in the future to notify guys of that.
Yeah, we would like to know.
But as far as the packet goes, I mean, Linda's, you posted, right? And so when that gets posted, I'm not sure if there's a specific date that it goes up, with the packet goes up, but it's usually 10 days to two weeks.
It's a week.
A week? Seven days?
It's about five and a half days.
Yeah, it's less than a week normally.
So, and then there's a counselor page on the...
Counselor gets it at the same time as everyone.
Yeah, there's a council page on the website that has all of our addresses, all of our phone numbers, and all of our email, so.
Well, if it's going to be monetary, because that's a huge problem in this town, is all the fees we have. I mean, like the water thing, and that lady at the water office is incredibly rude. It's amazing. Full sympathy. But there should be, if it's going to be a monetary impact, because that's a huge problem in this town. I mean, you want to see it revitalized, but it's like you've got fee after fee after fee. Well, how are they going to spend it downtown? You've got no disposable cash, so why not, you know, put things off that are going to hit us in the wallet a month? Like the increased trash bill, where the person came and, you know, said, "Oh, we put out questionnaires, and 250 people answered it, and nobody wants an increased rate," but they say... they say they'll use it, can we increase the rate? Well, every little bit impacts us, because, I mean, we're all paying the same grocery bills, and we all have that, every little bit impacts us. But instead, you know, it's just past that meeting, so, okay, well, they don't want to pay more, but you guys said, okay, they can pay more. But why can't you put that off a month, so that can actually be discussed in the community or discovered before you guys vote?
You raise a really valid point, and quite honestly, sometimes we get caught up in the business of doing business for the city, and what is our world here is vastly different from what is our world as a resident, as a taxpayer, and oftentimes, we forget what it's like to just be hearing about something for the first time, because we get a little advance notice, so we can definitely do a better job of that for you guys.
Gary wanted to address this also.
I wanted to clarify, the idea is that this came up one month, and the next month we passed an ordinance, that's really not how it happened. Counselor Grizzle had a comment from a citizen over the summer, I don't remember, it was July or August, or whenever it was, and she shared it with me, and so, I think it was the next council meeting, you can look it up, somewhere in late summer, I think. Counselor Grizzle and I addressed it to the rest of the council, there was a discussion here, and the council agreed that, yeah, we should look at that. And it was a month or two later, I think, that the city attorney then came back with the ordinance, so, you know, let me say respectfully that when we talk about citizen engagement, that it is a two-way street, that the city is always looking to do better, and sure, if we can figure out a way to put out better information, in fact, we're working on a new website right now, we hope to launch in January, February at the latest, you should find a lot easier to use and gain information from. But there's a two-way street here, and citizens who are concerned need to be engaged. If people had been here at the meeting in August or whenever it was, you would have heard that discussion, you would have known that it was coming. Our local press here is not always able to cover all of the issues, so it can be tough to get information out. That's why we, as a city, put stuff out on Facebook, on our website, so forth. That's why this issue even became known, because we wanted to make sure that people knew what we were doing. So, and when we talk about the $600, I hope everyone, well, let's talk about our enforcement posture. Our enforcement posture for the city of Lebanon is not one where we're going to play getcha. Typically, if there was a violation of this ordinance now, I think what you'd see is our code enforcement officer would approach the owner and probably simply ask that they...
Yeah, he's a nice guy, I've talked to him.
Yeah, in fact, if you look at the record so far, there have been zero fines levied from this ordinance, and I would venture to say, if you look a year from now, chances are, it's still going to be zero. This has nothing to do with the city wanting to make a whole bunch of money at $600 a pop. In fact, the $600 came up, and the city attorney can describe it better than I can, but under the code that we're operating under, it would have normally been a misdemeanor, which means a person would have gone to jail for a year. Now, that's clearly just way out of bounds. And so, in a good-hearted intention, our city attorney wrote the ordinance with an exception in it, so that it would fall into a different category under a fine that was established for other areas of the code. It was already existing, the $600 is not new. And so, he tagged it on there rather than have people serving jail time for garbage cans. So, that's how that process all came about. We're always looking to do things better, certainly if we could do this over again, I'm sure we would do some things differently, but it wasn't something that happened one month, and then we passed an ordinance the next. So, I don't know, did I cover well enough, Trey, about how we got to $600?
Yeah, I mean, I would just add that, you know, basically, if there's nothing listed in it, and it's a violation of city ordinance, that's the default, up to $600. Having done enforcement and working with the other ladies in my office to do enforcement, I don't think I've ever seen a $600 fine, to be perfectly honest. So, it was just consistent with the rest of the ordinance, rest of the enforcement ordinance for pretty much anything that you could consider to be just a violation of city ordinance as opposed to a crime under state law.
And I would venture to say, based on our history and our enforcement posture, to get a fine like that, a $600 fine, you'd have to be someone who was willfully violating it, who had been notified multiple times, whose neighbors were extremely upset. It's that kind of extreme situation where you're going to see a fine like that come into play. Certainly not on a first, second, or even probably a third offense. Our code enforcement has always tried to work with folks. We engage property owners all the time, not on garbage cans, but on tall weeds and the such. It's a regular event, and we don't charge them. Yeah, the option is there, but that's because you go out with the carrot and you're kind, but you got the stick, because you might come across someone at some point who just won't comply and wants to make life difficult for all of their neighbors, and at that point, the city has a responsibility.
I've met those kind of people, but it's more of, it did seem to come out of nowhere, because, I mean, I can't be here, I could have brought my five-year-old tornado with me, but I had somebody at home today, and Tuesdays, I'm a scout leader every Tuesday night, so that doesn't, that's, and you'll probably see my 11-year-olds here at some point. But it's more of, I would like to see a better explanation than just discussing ordinances. So, if you bring it up on the website, you know what's going to be, and it did seem to be like it was the very next month, because if you watch the video, it's like September, the guy's complaining, and then October, it passed. So, I mean, maybe it's something that comes up multiple times, but that's what it seemed like, and it seems like it should be a better explanation that comes out there. And I mean, we would like to discuss things as a community with our representatives, if we're given a chance ahead of time, but, you know, and we, you know, our representatives for our district's area wards, whatever they're called, anyway.
And I appreciate you, and I appreciate Margaret too, coming out and talking to us, because this needs to happen, for us to be good community servants and for the city to do the right thing. It's, you know, it's important to know that what happens here, though, when someone messaged me and was complaining kind of about the same thing, that, you know, you're doing things without us knowing about it. And yes, there are things that happen, that, you know, I don't broadcast everything that I do in regards to my job as a counselor, and I don't think that I should have to, because the people elect us to kind of do that stuff, it's the expectation. Just like you saw today, though, you know, we went to the counselor comments section, and I brought something up, and we had a quick discussion, and now it's scheduled to hit for the next meeting or the meeting after that. That's how things happen here, and this is where they're supposed to happen, in the public session, in the public forum, in front of everyone. It's not meant to be, to happen to where it's printed, and then everyone, if you don't see it, you miss out on it, it's meant to happen in the public meeting, in public session, when we're all here together. And so, that's the benefit of coming to the meetings or watching them, at least on YouTube. At least if you watch them on YouTube at your own convenience at home, you can get all fired up, and then you can get right in the horn to your counselor, you can type out that email, hopefully you take a day to relax first before you do, but you can type out that email and say, hey, you know, I watched this, tell me about this, what's going on, or pick up the phone and call us, because I get phone calls all the time throughout the month, and usually, if I don't know the answer, it's, you know what, I'm going to find out for you, let me get your number, and I'll get back to you. And the next thing I do is, I call Gary, or I call one of the department managers that I'm familiar with, and I say, tell me about this issue and why this has happened this way, and then I call you back personally. That's what you can expect from your counselors. But if you come here, you'll expect to get the inside scoop, because this is where it happens. We can't predict which way a discussion goes sometimes, and sometimes we'll have very elaborate discussions and very animated ones that end up going down lots of rabbit holes before they reach their final destination, and we just can't, you know, the clerk can't predict what's going to happen. So, it is kind of a two-way street. I'm so glad to see people like you and Margaret here, and I really encourage you to encourage your friends to come when they can. I know not everyone can make it all the time.
Yeah.
And it's Wednesdays, not Tuesdays, second Wednesday. But encourage them to come, encourage them to watch on YouTube, encourage them to find us on Facebook, because the ones, those of us that are on the Facebook, the mayor and I have Facebook pages for our council stuff.
I know, I've contacted him.
Yeah, and so, we pump a lot of stuff out that, you know, wouldn't otherwise be known until the next month, so please, please, please know that we're trying, and if you have ideas that could help us serve you better or get information out better, we really do want to hear them. And all our information is online, you can find us on the city website, we have our own little page with horrible pictures of us in suits and ties, but please find us and reach out, because that's the only way we kind of keep our finger on the pulse of what you, the citizens, are concerned about, and that is the most important thing to us, is how our decisions affect you. It really is. So, please encourage people to do that.
Okay.
And we will keep that in mind when we're making the agenda to make sure that we're descriptive on things.
Be helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address council? Last chance. Okay, lastly, items from the press, any questions? Matt, did Matt leave?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. With that, we'll adjourn, and we'll ask the members to stay, is that correct?
Yeah, we'd like the members of the task force to stay briefly, we want to get a group photo.
Okay, adjourn.